... into precinct and the Kentucky precinct. And I would like to welcome all of you here. I would also especially like to welcome Neil Cass, Town Administrator, Deb Galant, Business Administrator, the Select Board. If you'll stand up, the Select Board. The Superintendent of Schools, Steve Chamberlain, Business Administrator for the Schools, Michelle Clark, any Commissioners of the Hopkinton or Village or Hopkinton or Kentucky Village Precincts here? No? Okay. And members of the Budget Committee. We always hope that we will have good attendance from a large number of voters in Hopkinton at the public hearing. And I can see we don't have a lot, but I think it's a few more than we normally get. So, thank you. I also, when we start the official meeting, I would like to ask that you limit your talk to three minutes or so. This will give others a chance to give us their opinion, too. And please don't, you can come up secondly if we have exhausted all the people that would like to sit first. At the conclusion of tonight's meeting, the Board will discuss and vote on the budget to be presented to the two precincts within Hopkinton in the town and school meetings which are held in March. So we have a deliberation when we are done by the Budget Committee. And some take time, it takes a long time to get through it, and other times it's very quick. So without any further ado, I'd like to call the Vice Chair of the Budget Committee, Rich Houston, to the podium.
Janet asked me to, our Board Chairman, asked me to speak about the Budget Committee's preliminary votes taken two weeks ago on January 29th. These votes on the four budgets we oversee give us an understanding of where we stand prior to our final vote. For the Hopkinton Village Precinct, the Kentucky Village Precinct, and the Town Budget, the Committees were unanimous in accepting the budgets as presented. The School District Budget was also accepted as presented, but not unanimously, and only after a long and difficult debate. So too this budget came to us from a school board as a non-unanimous resolution due to the increases of the budget. A minority on the Budget Committee proposed additional cutting to the school budget in the amount of $423,000 to reduce the 1.2 million increase asked for by the school board to an increase of just $862,000. That would reduce the budget increase from about an 8.9% increase to a 6% increase. It must be noted that the school board had already cut the administrators' budget by $300,000 before being sent to the Budget Committee. Two positions were cut in that $300,000, an elementary library assistant and an elementary numeracy assistant. The proponents of this cut of $423,000 noted that it was needed to slow the increase in school funding, excuse me, school spending estimated to be 18% over the next two years, especially with two new large bond payments coming up. The constant and large year-over-year property tax increases are making housing costs unaffordable, especially for the elderly and the working class. Strong public comment in public and in private back up these points. Folks note that with reevaluation and taxes going up faster than their incomes, they have been hit hard in fear they will be forced out of their homes. On the other side of this discussion, it was said that the $423,000 cut would be equal to four or more teaching positions being eliminated on top of the two positions already cut by the school board. The school system has already been under a budget freeze for the last two years, and little reserve funds are available to buffer any more cuts. With 81% of a school's budget dedicated to salaries and benefits of staff, positions not regulated by state minimum standards of education would be the only way to absorb these cuts. Elementary literacy or numeracy support staff, foreign languages, sports, and choice classes at the high school would be the areas of reduction of staff should this cut go through. Other classes such as English, math, and social studies would likely include these. In short, teachers would be taken out of classrooms and education would be impacted. After much debate, seven of our Budget Committee voted in favor and three against to accept the school board budget as written. Please give us your input tonight on this difficult decision. We are listening. We know that people will be hurt if taxes go up any higher, and especially if they go up a lot in the next couple of years. We also know that if we don't raise the budget expenditures, programming may be lost at the schools and people may lose their jobs. There are no easy answers. Help us find the middle ground.
Thank you, Rich. I apologize, I don't think I gave the school board a chance to stand up. So would the school board please stand up? Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is presentation of the Hopkinton Village Precinct, Thomas Lapona-Pone. I always have trouble, I'm sorry.
Lapona, that's great.
With a Chrysanthac, I shouldn't, but I do. Thank you, Tom.
Yeah. I have like two slides, is it worth plugging into this?
Sure, sure, you can, whatever's easiest.
Is there a cable over there?
Cable's right.
Cable's right. Oh, where?
Need a dongle over there?
Uh, got dongles. Is there a dongle?
It's HDMI.
I've got a dongle.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Dongle?
To me, it's Greek, I'm sorry.
All right, can everyone hear me? Hi, everybody. I'm Thomas Lapone, I'm one of the Hopkinton Village Precinct Commissioners. You know, there's not a whole lot of budget details in here, but I'll try my best to make it super interesting for you guys. Quick overview, total amount that we will be raising the taxes for the precinct will be $17,791. The actual appropriations for the precinct is much higher than that, $108,000. The difference there is really the Water Board. The Water Board's self-funded, so we don't really have to raise any taxes for that, but it's just a major driver there. And then for the actual precinct itself, the major driver is streetlights, about $10,000 in electric coal usage and replacement parts for the streetlights. Breakdown-wise, for the water, I'll start with the water because it's kind of the easier part, it's self-funded. There's currently $25,000 in checking accounts that carry over, and then there's $56,000 of expected sales. That's going up slightly due to a bond that's being taken out. And then for the administration side, kind of a little more interesting, for the actual administrative costs, which include various savings, insurance, like different insurance portions, software, stuff like that, $5,559. We pay for insurance. And then there's a legal fund and a building fund that carry over year-to-year that total about $7,000, and that's really just in case anything comes up that needs to be repaired. And then clock winding, it's kind of the coolest portion, keep the clock winding. And then there's a balance that carries over year-to-year that really funds the legal fund and the building fund. And then, I mean, the only other big thing is there is a major water update. There was, there's two, currently two $99,000 bonds. One has been taken out, the other one has been authorized, and that's really for existing capital improvement of the water system. It's been kind of like a major thing that's been going on. We know, it's had to happen for a long time, so we're finally taking it on, replacing storage tanks and water pumps. Currently, the plan is going to prove by the state, we're just finalizing the budget, or fi- fi- sorry, finalizing proposals, and then hopefully we'll start actual construction soon, so late spring, 2020. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. And for those of you that might not realize it, that little voice that you hear every once in a while happens to be Tom's daughter. And she's, yeah, there she is. She was at the senior center today, so that was neat, I got to see her this morning. But she's a, she's a little angel, I'll tell you. Now, questions by members of the audience on Tom's presentation? Do you have any questions?
I'm curious, where are the storage tanks?
It's right as you drive down, right as you start from the Cracker Barrel and drive down Briar Hill, right when you kind of go down that first dip, there's a little road that goes off.
Right.
Do you know where they were doing like the major culvert project last, just before that? If you look as you're going down towards the left, there's a little dirt road, you can see a gate, and then...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then right past there is the well, the pump, and the storage tanks.
Thank you. And the clock winding, is that at the church?
That's in the church, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
What other question?
Yes.
How many homes are served in Hopkinton by the water?
By the water? I don't have an exact count, but I believe it's in like the 100 and 120 range.
Okay, next is presentation for the Kentucky Village Precinct Budget by Don Houston.
Hello, welcome all. The Kentucky Precinct was established in 1895 and has three functions: provide fire protection for the precinct, and that's done through 84 hydrants, provide water to 600 customers, and provide 124 streetlights to help us find our way. The water system comprises a 600-gallon storage tank and filtration upwind-bound tree road and another 300,000-gallon tank down Main Street here in Kentucky, and has a distribution of piping of 15 miles. I'm happy to announce the hiring of Sam Currier, our new Superintendent of Water and Sewer. The town and the precinct got together to hire one person with both qualifications, and met him for the first time last night, and he seems like a very astute person. He was brought up and did the same system over in Rochester. So he's now fully on board. The precinct's major project this year will be replacing the drainage line from the Main Street tank that was supposed to be done last year, but everybody was so busy we couldn't find a contractor, so it's to be done this year for around $91,000. The precinct again wants to raise another $250,000 to put into our capital reserve account, and that's to, in the future, at some point, we're going to have to replace the facility upwind-bound tree. And the estimate of that cost is someway is around $3 million. We don't know when it's going to happen, it could be five, six, seven, could be out in 10 years. We're trying to accumulate some money to push in that shock. Right now, we've got $835,000 in that account, and we try to add $250,000 each year. The operating budget of $263,000 is up $30,000 this year. It's a 13% increase, and it's primarily due to hiring our new superintendent. The amount to be raised by taxes is up the same amount, and the total amount to be raised is $304,810. Both of them are going up, but the tax rate is actually going down because of reevaluation. The tax rate is going down 30 cents a thousand, down to $1.81 a thousand. We invite you to our annual meeting. We usually get about one attendance there at that one. It's at the Slusser Center on March 25th at 6:00 PM. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Next is presentation of the Town Operating Budget by Ken Tromb.
Thank you. I'm awaiting going in for hip replacement surgery, so it's painful for me to stand, so I'm going to be sitting to give the presentation. Let me know if you can't hear me. Okay, I'd like to start by thanking you all for coming this evening to learn about and discuss how all of our tax dollars may be spent. I'd also like to thank my fellow Select Board members, all of whom are here tonight. They're here to support me where I can't answer any questions, Budget Committee members here, the Capital Improvement Committee members, and many other committee members for their hard work and dedication throughout this difficult budget process. Without the invaluable assistance of volunteers such as these, as well as many others, our town wouldn't be the terrific place it is to live in. This also goes for our town employees, department heads, town administrators. Now, I view the budget as just a real team project, and we'll see where it goes. And so the budget process to date, it actually started this past summer when the Select Board, in line with the Budget Committee's guidance, set a goal for an increase of less than 4% while continuing to meet the town's needs while planning for the future. With this information, our department heads prepared their budget requests based on what they need to effectively run their respective departments. They met with the Town Administrator and Finance Director to review such, held a budget summit to review all the requests and the overall impact. The department heads also presented and discussed their capital requests with the CIP Program Committee, that's the Capital Improvement Program Committee. The Select Board met with each department head to review their requests, which resulted in extensive discussions about needs and ways to reduce those requests. The Select Board also reviewed and discussed with the CIP Committee their recommendations, which you will hear a lot about later, and is where the principal topic related to culverts and roads. With great difficulty, the Select Board cut the department heads' requests by $102,200 and the CIP's recommendation by $265,000. The Select Board was also able to use $350,000 from the undesignated fund balance to offset taxes. This was $215,000 more than was available for use last year. While taking these actions, the Select Board constantly kept in mind the dual concerns of affordability and needs. This budget was then presented to the Budget Committee, who, as Rich just mentioned, unanimously agreed that it should be presented this evening to you without any changes. This doesn't mean the Budget Committee won't take other actions later this evening. It seems like for the seven years now that I've been presenting the Town Budget, each year turns out to be more challenging, and this year certainly was. I think it's fair to say that no one, including myself, is happy with the results, but we believe it best meets the opposing goals of affordability and meeting the town's needs. So at the 10,000-foot level, the final results are operating expenses up $421,000 over the $219 budget, the Capital Reserve Fund Trust Fund funding up $343,500. There's no change in individual warrant articles and a $215,000 reduction due to the use of the fund balance. So the bottom line is a 50 cent increase in the town portion of the tax rate, or 7.87%. So now turning to the numbers in some more detail. As far as revenues, other than property taxes are concerned, we're estimating an increase over the 2019 budget levels of $123,673, or 3.8%. Major drivers there are, there's several of them. The first one is a $32,000 reduction in the land use change tax, and that's due to the Select Board's decision where instead of sharing the revenues from the land use change tax with the Conservation Commission, we had a 35% going to the commission and 100% of the 100%, we've decided to allocate the whole 100% to the Conservation Commission. And that recommendation will be voted on separately at Town Meeting in March. Among the reasons for doing this is it will provide the commission with the ability to acquire more matching funds for land preservation because they have, will have more funds available to them. And the dollars going into the land use change tax changed dramatically from year to year, so it's really hard to budget what a reasonable average figure is. Okay, next is, based on 2019 revenue levels, we expect motor vehicle registrations to bring in $80,000 more than budgeted for 2019. So I'd ask the air that everyone please continue purchasing new vehicles. Based on the current two-year state budget, we expect to receive $49,891 more than budgeted in 2019. In effect, the town, through the two-year state budget, is receiving basically $50,000 in this year and last year. The next item, and Don Houston just mentioned it, relates to the sewer fund and the sharing of an employee between the precinct and the town. From the town's side, on the revenue side, the income from the sewer fund increase actually has no impact on the total to be raised by taxes, as the $60,603 amount is mostly attributed to the precinct and their share of costs for sharing an employee position with the town. That employee will be responsible not only for running the precinct's water operations, as Don mentioned, but also the town sewer operations. And in both cases, it'll result in the town and the precinct having to contract out significantly less work, and we believe having a shared employee will provide better service and cost less. The last two items on this slide, the transfer station, commercial, and recycling revenue are down a combined $30,000, and that's based on 2019 actuals, and continue to be an area the Select Board and our committees continue to look at and keeping a close eye on. Recognizing that a part of alleviating the tax burden on property owners is to bring in other revenue sources, just two of the actions that I want to point out are, in this budget, there are funds for a part-time or a per diem economic development director. The cost of this position will be split between the town and the tax increment financing districts, and the purpose will be to encourage development and obtain grants for such. We hope over time this will result in more tax revenues coming to the town. The second item is the solar array at the transfer station that was approved at the last Town Meeting and gave the Select Board authority to proceed with this. And what's happened so far is the company has exercised their option with Hopkinton and Webster, and we've received a check for $2,500. Now the company is moving forward in terms of working out agreements with Eversource and Unitil, independent system operator for New England, and other items like this, and we stand ready to help in that process, and we'll be having more public information on that as things develop. Okay, on the operating expense side of things, we're proposing an increase of $421,350, or 5.79%. Again, among the major drivers are the addition of a part-time, 25-hour-per-week position for the town clerk tax collector's office, a merit wage pool based on a 3% average increase for our, what I would call our excellent town employees, wish we could afford to give them more. We will be continuing our current health insurance offerings, which are facing a guaranteed maximum annual increase of 6.4%. It may be later, lower, but we don't know that until, I believe, after Town Meeting. And the other reason is there's just the change in the status of some employees, say, from single coverage to family. Another item was the full-time wages for our police department are increased due to a comparative salary analysis with other towns. And just as an aside, I wonder how many people know that recently Concord was rated the seventh safest community in the state, and the safest in terms of violent crime. And I think that is something we have to thank Chief Pecora and his department for. Next is full-time wages for our Department of Public Works. They're increasing due to we added a position during the past year, and so this year we're having a full year's worth of salary for that position. And finally, there's the, again, the offset, the revenues relating to the sewer expenses from the sharing of the position. Okay, turning to the warrant articles for the Capital Reserve Funds and Trusts, they total $890,500, or a $343,500 increase. And there, the major drivers are $127,500 toward the purchase of an estimated $625,000, I have to say that again, $625,000 fire engine this year, and that's replacing an engine that was from 1995. What I'll get into more detail lately is we have a major backlog of road and culvert work, and one of the warrant article items here are funds for $100,000 to be part of how we attack that issue. There'd be an increase of $50,000 toward the replacement of our 2015 ambulance in 2023, and that would be at an estimated cost of $333,000. We're including $61,000 for the library, and that's mainly for painting inside and out, as well as continued upgrades to the sprinkler system, which we can all understand why we are, upgrades for the sprinkler system. There's also $30,000 for sewer equipment and sludge removal. In the next several years, sludge will have to be removed from the lagoon, a cost of over $200,000, and we're just building up the reserve for that. And finally, there's a reduction of $20,000 to Town Facilities Maintenance Trust with the major expenditure this year for the driveway and parking area at the police station. Okay, under individual warrant articles, we are asking for authority to go out for a $2.2 million proposed road bond. This is expected to be a 10-year bond with an estimated cost of approximately $250,000 per year. But our first payment will not be due until 2021, so that's not in the tax rate we're proposing here. So that's not in the tax rate we're proposing here. While the expenditures for these funds, the $2.2 million would be mostly used to address culverts on Kearsage, Briar Hill, Bounty, and Tyler Bridge, which our Department of Public Works feels must be dealt with soon, there are a lot of other road projects that should also be dealt with soon. And again, per our Department of Public Works, results in a total of $7,863,838. While the Select Board would like to address all of these issues quickly, from the viewpoint of our pocketbooks, we've opted to ask for a $2.2 million bond now, as well as the additional $100,000 I mentioned. And we're also, as we have been for a number of years, increasing the line item for shimming and paving within the operating budget by 5%. That brings another $17,700 into play. One good thing about seeking a bond now is the timing, that we expect interest rates to be no higher than 2.25% and potentially even fairly significantly lower than that. And if it come, if we can, through the State Finance Authority, come in at a rate of 2.25% or lower, I'll anticipate that the town would go ahead and refinance all of its existing debt, thus saving some additional funds. Okay. The other major impact on the tax rate is how much of the undesignedated fund balance we can apply to offset taxes this year. We're proposing to use 350,000, which is an increase of 250,000 over the amount used last year. The major reasons for the increased amount are the additional revenues above the budget coming from motor vehicle registration, again, thank you all for buying new cars, and that our department heads do a great job of keeping their expenditures at or below budget. So this next slide just puts all the numbers I've been discussing together. And the bottom line is that we're seeking a 50 cent increase in the tax rate or 7.87%. And that's on the town portion of the tax rate based on the new assessed valuation. And while I don't have a slide for it, I just wanted to mention again, in response to a comment Rich Houston had raised about the concern particularly for our low-income seniors, is that it's beyond the jurisdiction of this Budget Committee, but the Select Board at town meeting will be asking for approval to increase the exemptions for low-income seniors and disabled. So with that, are there any questions?
Bonnie Christie, Smithfield Road. I just have a question. I see that you're increasing funding for roads and culverts. And several years ago, the Conservation Commission did a very thorough study of the culverts in town roads and which ones needed to be upgraded and paid special attention to if they were replaced or repaired to ensure fish and wildlife passage. And I wondered if that study is being used because it looks like now we're going to fund a lot of the culvert repair and replacement. So this would be a good time to do that.
The answer is yes.
Go ahead.
And thank you for doing that.
Glad, glad to hear it. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Please give your name.
Rita Blanchard. I live on Barton Corner Road. Just, I didn't see any fire department wages in there.
Wages?
Yes, you said you had the salaries for the police department. You did not have any.
There are, yes, I mean, I was talking about significant changes. Yes, there were certainly fire department wages, but not significant changes.
Thank you. Do we really think it's prudent to be buying a new fire truck and ambulance with everything else going on?
My understanding is absolutely. I feel that, I know our fire department, police department, whatever, you know, if they say they need it, they need it. And like I think I mentioned, the age of the fire, fire engine that's being replaced.
Okay. Because I know we have the fire engines we're not using out on that way to Concord. You know, that's like a non-call station that we don't use all that often.
I believe those are, you know, older, smaller machines, engines.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, next is presentation of the school operating budget, the HEA and Teamsters contracts by William Chapin Jr.
Did you get around to applause today?
No, I didn't get around to applause.
It's been billed.
Did you, did you bring your own cheering team with you?
I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I want to thank the Budget Committee. Janet, thank you so much for all your time and service you've given this town. I want to thank the school board. We've had a great school board crew this year. It is not easy work to make meetings. Jim O'Brien, Matt Blanger, Norm Gubel actually makes most of the, he's making most of the Budget Committee meetings and a lot of the Select Board meetings as well. He's really given a lot of time into this. And then finally, Liz Durant, who is finishing out a 12-year term. But, you know, just, just a lot of dedication to this district, and it doesn't, it doesn't go unnoticed, Liz. Thank you for all your service that you've given us. I also want to thank Steve Chamberlain, obviously our leader through here, Michelle Clark. When you work on the Budget Committee and you're not as great with the fine, fine print, it's always nice to have Michelle on your corner. She's very rarely stumped whether we all understand the terminology that goes on. She certainly does. And I think the Budget Committee, I don't want, well, I will speak for the Budget Committee. I think they're very appreciative of Michelle's fine work there because it is not easy to do the numbers for a school district in this, in this environment. So thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Steve. And I'd like to thank Rich for his comments earlier. I don't know if Janet prepared those for him or just, but I thought he spoke very well. Sorry, Rich. I didn't mean to. Okay. I know you collaborated, but they were well done. I mean, it is a struggle. And I, and I don't, I don't want anyone to think that, you know, over the past, ever since I've been part of the school board, the budgets have, the budget and what we spend has been paramount in what we think about. We are trying to run, you know, the best district we can with the amount of costs that, you know, that we can limit. So it has been, it has been a struggle for everybody. And we all are on the same team. I mean, I think we all want what's absolutely best for this district, and we just have different opinions sometimes as to, as to how to get there. But, but I, you know, thank you, Rich, for those comments earlier. So just getting in a little bit on the presentation here, I want to talk a little bit about the process that we went through. December 5th, the superintendent made a presentation, the operating budget. This was the first chance. We had, we had an idea of what we were looking at coming into this year. And, you know, as, as, you know, as Ken had said, this is a particularly difficult year. I mean, I, since I've been on the school board, it hasn't, it hasn't been easy with the numbers that we've had to deal with. On December 12th, we looked at the capital improvement plan, revenues and trust values. Then back on December 19th, and we tasked the superintendent with giving us an idea of what, you know, teacher reductions would look like, actually, when rubber hit the road, what they would look like at each school and including special education. And each department head came in and talked about what, you know, what they would need to do to make, you know, a teacher reduction in their, in their particular area or in their building, and it gave the school board a real sense of what we're dealing with. January, we, school board still went back to the superintendent and asked him to tier out what it would look like with a tax rate increase of 7%, then 6%, then 5%, then 4%, to really get a sense of what we're dealing with in terms of, you know, I guess it's wants and needs, but if we are going to make cuts, they have to come from somewhere, and the superintendent's going to determine that. We looked to him to see what those would be. And then on January 2nd, school board gathered together to come, to try to come up with a budget from, you know, deriving from the superintendent's budget that we would present to the Budget Committee. And after long deliberation on that particular night, the school board decided to cut out $300,000 out of the superintendent's budget. That was a three to two vote, I believe. I think there was one school board member who felt that there was too much in cuts and one that felt there wasn't quite enough. But nonetheless, we came up with, we came up with a number and a majority vote that we came to the Budget Committee to present a budget that had a $300,000 reduction from what Steve's budget was. Steve then went to work in deciding what that would look like, and that's sort of how we got started with Budget Committee. Now on the bottom, if anyone can see that, on January 8th, we presented, the school board presented the operating budget and the warrant. These are not easy, easy meetings, okay? So we then, the Budget Committee was tasked with looking at a much deeper look of the fiscal 2021 budget. We had question and answers, and then we went over the HEA contract, which is the teacher contract, which I'll get to in a little bit. And on January 22nd, as we, on the 15th, we did not have an agreement yet on the Teamster contract, which is the custodians of the school. We did have one on January 22nd, which we needed to review with the Budget Committee. And then today is the public hearing on all budgets. And then our annual meeting is on the 14th. That just gives a little timeline. Next slide shows a little bit of the fiscal 2021 budget drivers. So we talked a little bit about, I think Rich had mentioned, you know, 82% or 81, 82% of our total cost of operations come from personnel. So obviously, one of the biggest drivers is health, health insurance. The other big driver was the facility project bond. It was approved last school board meeting, last March 12th, it's there rounds. And then we had, we had an increase in a specialized transportation situation as well. Just getting into health insurance. Increase, the major increase is a result of the guaranteed maximum rate. I think Ken had mentioned this a little bit earlier with the town employees. That is a, that's determined, that's a number that's determined by the Health Trust Board and given to us in October, November of what that number might be. But we don't know what it actually will be until maybe mid-March, early April. But a maximum rate increase of 6.4% is kind of a worst-case scenario in terms of, in terms of where we're at there. So that total increase on the health insurance side is 351,000 or 45 cents per thousand on your tax rate. We also talked a little bit about the facility project that was approved last year. We have budgeted for a 20-year level principal bond with a current interest rate of 3.75%. Again, worst-case scenario, the good news on that, I don't, I don't know if we'd go as low as two, two and a quarter. That number could be significantly lower. We hope it, we hope it will be. But in this particular budget, we're budgeting off the number that we proposed for last year. I think that was a 3.75% was the best estimate we could get last year, which I guess in some circles is scary, it could have gone the other way. But anyways, that's the budget number. The good news is, is that that number would be, probably will be lower. So in this fiscal year 2021 that we're talking about here, it's a $219,000 increase because we won't get the full year's worth of interest on that bond. But that will come full in 2022, which will be an $849,000 budget item or 1.09 estimate based on that 3.75% interest rate on the 20-year level principal bond for the facility And then in transportation, we had a, we just, we had need for transportation issue of 82,000 that we are, you know, anticipating for next year. That is a bit of a driver here. That's 11, 11 cents per thousand. Now, just taking a quick look at what the March 14th warrant is going to look like. Obviously, you've got Article 1. Article 2 is SB Bill 2 that will be discussed at that point. And for those not aware of that, I guess more on that to follow, I think. Yeah, we got another slide, I guess, coming on that one. But anyways, Article 3 will be the budget. We'll go over the budget. Article 4, 5, potentially 5, will be the Hopkinton Educational Association. This will be their contract. We'll go into detail on that, improve that, or discuss that. Article 6 will be the Teamsters contract. Article 8 is the contingency fund. There is more on this coming, but I'm just going through the article here is how it will be presented. Article 9, the maintenance fund. Article 10, Special Education Trust. Article 11, Vehicle Trust. And then Article 10, or Article 12, which is to transact any other business. Okay, Article 1, Reports of Agents, and Article 2, we will be discussing Senate Bill SB 2. And we will have a public hearing on this on February 20th, Thursday, February 20th. That's the place to come. That's the time to come for that, and we want to really discuss that into a little bit more detail. I, you know, need clarification on specifics on this as well, but my understanding is there's been enough votes to bring this to the ballot so that we will discuss it. If anyone was here seven or eight years ago, this also came up on the, on the, on the warrant article, seven or eight years ago. Okay, and then Article 3, which is the bulk here, this is the operating budget, which we're showing an increase of $863,286 or an increase of 4.2%, making the total operating budget to run the school for 2021 season, $21,416,331. The tax impact on that is 75 cents per thousand. Article 4. Whoop. Okay, and then just quickly on that operating budget, going into the revenue side, we did have an increase this year on the state adequacy side of $641,000. That number is not in the budget for fiscal year 2021. So for, for last year, we had an adequacy aid of one-time influx that is not, we are not anticipating that coming next year. I think student activity is one increase that we're having. This is just fees for athletics. And then we will be transferring some funds from the Building Repair and Maintenance Fund of $1,912. Now decreases. Now decreases, we have a bond in there, 9.7 million, which is revenue from last year. A fund balance of $370,000, which we are resetting the fund balance to $150,000. So that's a decrease in revenue coming to the operating budget. In Article 10, we have $175,000 that we are not projecting to take and we'll leave it right where it is. And then Special Education Aid, we're seeing a decrease of $172,000 from the state and then a decrease of the state property tax of $38,000 and then a Medicaid decrease of $2,000, okay? But that is really low. That's worst-case scenario on the Medicaid piece and we'll know more about what the state will give us in Medicaid with regards to our employees in September, October. So it's tough to budget for that. Now, we can't budget. We have to budget what the worst-case scenario would be. Next article is the Teamsters. Okay, this is, sorry, this is Article 4 HEA and just scratch out Teamsters on that. This is just the teacher contract, okay? So this is another article that's, that's going to be voted on. Just to summarize this, this is a three-year contract. It's an increase of two point, an increase of 2.75%. It does include something new. There's a cost share on the health insurance premium of three-year, 3% in the first year, 5% in the second year, and 7% in the third year, okay? Cost, the actual cost of the warrant in year one is 307,000. On year two is 315,000 and year three is 309,000, which is a total of 932,000, which is a tax impact of 40 cents per thousand. Here's the Teamster one. These are custodians that we have, full-time maintenance staff. It's 160,000 square feet to cover. This is a five-year contract that was negotiated with the Teamsters. It's an increase of 2.5% and then 3.5% the first two years and then 3%, 4% in years three through five. I have that right, Michelle? Okay. Again, some caveats there. There is a health insurance cost share beginning in year three, a 2% increase, 4% and then 6% for the employee. And then there's a 70/30 split on a buyout. And this is basically if they have other insurance options, we will pay them to take those other options. And the cost of this warrant in year one is $12,436,058. Year two is $10,750.74. Year three, $13,896.06. Year four is $9,175.10 and year five is $12,192.29. Okay, Article 8 is the contingency fund. Okay, so we're asking to raise $150,000 in Article 8 for the contingency fund. And the contingency fund is funds used to try to offset anything that we think might be out there, that might not come to fruition, but might. Obviously, it's hard to budget for a year. We don't know how many students we're going to have until, you know, actual September date comes. So some of the things out there that we are, you know, thinking we may need funds for, it has been projected that our kindergarten enrollment is 86 students. Now, we've talked to our principal, obviously Steve, superintendent, Bill, the principal. We don't, we don't think that's going to happen, but it's been projected by the, who projects this for us?
New England School Development.
New England School Development projected this number for us. So subsequently, we put it in there. If we, if we get 86 kids, we're, we would have to run five sections of kindergarten where we currently have four. So that is something that is out there that, you know, scares us a little bit. Third grade, so this is the projected up third grade, current second grade. The second grade class is about 70 kids, 69, 70 kids. It is broken up into four sections. As you, as you enter into another grade level, our thought is maturity improves to some degree. I guess that's up for anyone who has a second going into third grade, but we can handle, from a state level, we can handle three sections of 70, just barely. But if we get more numbers in that third grade, in that second grade, going to third grade class, again, it is a problem. We would have to go back to four sections of that third grade and the following year would be four sections anyway. And then in sixth grade, you know, currently, right now, with a $300,000 cut that was made by the school board, the sixth grade would really roll down into three sections as opposed to four right now. Now, we're right on the cusp. Again, if numbers change, we'd have to go back to four. But that really is an instructional shift from what we've done before. The sixth grade is more of a model, it's a little bit more choice in sixth grade. You're entering into middle school, so it's a, it's a tough shift, but it is a shift nonetheless. And we have, we're asking to raise some contingency funds to help maybe not make that shift if we have more kids, but the current fifth grade class is lower in numbers. I don't know what the, what's the actual number of that fifth grade class offhand? About 68, okay? And again, the fourth grade class is a lot, is a much larger class. So that would go back, you know, how it was, you know, in future years, okay? Let's see here. Contingency, okay, again, on the elementary program, this contingency fund could help potentially assist in a library media assistant, a numeracy specialist assistant in the event, you know, we have more need for that, but currently that is not in our budget. So that would be part of a contingency fund. And then, you know, perhaps bringing back FACS, which is Family Consumer Science. The tax impact of this contingency fund is 19 cents per thousand, okay? Just want people to understand a contingency. And also understand that if these funds are not used, they go back. They do not just get merged in the operating. And we separated these out so that it's an understanding that these would go back to, back to the tab, back to the tab. Next one. Okay, Article 9, looking to raise money for the repair and maintenance fund. Current level of that fund is 192,000. In this budget, we're looking to raise 142,500 with potential planned spending of 259,000, which would leave us with 72,500. Now, it's not a foregone conclusion that we would do the air conditioning, but that is something that we would raise for that particular fund in the chance that we need to replace the air conditioning in the gym, okay? The tax impact is 18 cents per thousand. And then finally, Article 10, Special Education Trust. Utilization, okay, yes. Okay, so this past year, fiscal year 2019, we actually dipped into that particular fund for the first, first time in a while?
Yeah, second.
Yeah, second, second time in 10 years, okay? Used $40,000 out of that. Current funding level is 129,000 and we really want to replace, we want to replace that, the number that we use. So the recommended level to be funded goes back up to 169,000. And so we'd raise $40,000 there, the tax impact would be 5 cents per thousand, okay? And then finally, Vehicle Replacement Trust. Current level is 45,000. This is something that we add to Vehicle Replacement Trust. We add every year, we need to replace a bus in fiscal year 2021, 15,000. Replace a van a year after that, 2022. And then we, so we're looking to make a contribution of $15,000 into that Vehicle Replacement Trust, which has a tax impact of 2 cents per thousand. And then finally, you know, and this, this number has, you know, this, this average cost per pupil has dropped off a little bit since, you know, the last six or seven years. Could be because the student numbers have been going up, but this is a great slide that shows exactly how much we spend in Hopkinton versus very comparable districts in New Hampshire. What I mean comparable, I'm talking apples to apples. Districts that offer a K through 12, so we're really comparing what they're spending and what we are spending in this district. And we're really out of, is it 39? I think it's more than that. It's 52. Out of 52, we rank 26th in spending. So really right in the middle and there isn't one school in here that outperforms us in US, you know, US Today, World News, you know, standings. There isn't one school in here that outperforms us. So it really is an above-average performance for an average cost. Thank you very much. Questions?
Thank you. Before we open it to the public for questions, I would like to ask Ginny Houston to read us, Haynes, I'm sorry. How long you been Haynes? A long time?
Forty-something years.
But see, these people will know that I knew you as Houston. Sorry, Janey, Ginny Houston Haynes. A letter that I received this afternoon. Go ahead, Ginny. Thank you.
I'll read from here and I think I have a lot in my voice. How do you say her name? Mary Custeran. And I'm just the messenger. Unfortunately, I have to take Nick somewhere tonight and will not be able to attend the hearing tonight. I would, however, like to submit the statement to the budget committee. Each year, I try to think of new ways to convince people that our town's ecosystem is not healthy. It is not healthy for so much to go to the school system while people tighten their belts and the town does what it can to keep things affordable. It's not healthy for people to deal with a chronic stress of whether or not they can afford to stay in their house another year. I'm actually scared to do major repairs and updates to our own house because I know it will likely cause the value of our house to go up. Think about that for a moment. Do I repair my deck and risk my, risk my taxes increasing even more or do I just make the deck off limits and breathe easy because we'll be able to stay in our house for an additional number of years? I'll be honest, the less stressful option is to let the house become decrepit. At the request of the budget committee a few years ago, the school began providing tiered lists of reductions should their budget demands not be met. The request was initially made so the budget committee could make more informed decisions about whether or not to support the increase in the school budget. Unfortunately, it has become a bludgeon that the school administration uses to abdicate responsibility when it comes to tough monetary decisions. The tiered reduction list now provides an open path for the school administrations to say the town knowingly took cookies and milk away from the children. We told them we would have to take cookies and milk away and that's what the town did. Isn't the town terrible for not supporting the children? The school is now more than ever able to hold us hostage. They do it by holding an invisible knife to a child's well-being and threatening to make the children suffer if we, as a town, don't give the school everything they demand. Here's the thing we forget, the items in the proposed increase never existed in the first place. We're not taking away anything from the children by rejecting the proposed budget increases. If the school says we are taking anything away from the children, it means they did not manage their budget responsibly the past year. It means they made poor budget decisions. It means they performed the same budgetary gymnastics they always do. Well, we lost the one-time aid from the state and instead of planning with the knowledge that we wouldn't have that money this year, we spent it on something with a recurring cost and now the children will suffer if you don't give us money. Or, well, we didn't have to make that bond payment this year, so suddenly we're able to add all these items to our budget even though we know we'll eventually need to take it out, take out another bond. It is a never-ending cycle of borrowing from Peter to pay, to pay Paul while always making sure it is the people of Hopkinton who are to blame if something goes wrong. If only the town would meet our every demand, everything in the school budget would be perfect. I'm just the messenger. More insulting than all of that is the way the school administration acts as though the district is full of long-suffering and benevolent martyrs. Well, we really need 3 million, a $3 million increase, but we knew the town wouldn't be able to support that, so we're only asking for a 1 million increase instead. Woe is us having to do more with less. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of the guilt-tripping. I'm tired of playing the blame game. It's the job of the school administration to prioritize their budget based on what the town can sustainably provide them with. It's like cutting your food budget to pay for your Lamborghini. In case you couldn't figure it out, the school's Lamborghini. I'm tired of thinking up new ways to explain what the problem is. We need to stand up for the town. We need to stand up against gentrification that has been happening, is happening, and will continue to happen. I'm asking for the budget committee to please reject the school, the school's proposed budget increase.
Thank you, Ginny.
You're welcome.
Next is another letter that I received this afternoon and Deb Norris has agreed to read it. Thank you, Deb.
Dear Ms. Durant and Ms. Presini, we understand that difficult decisions must be made when balancing budgets. As the Chair of the School Board and Chair of the Budget Committee, we would like to ask you to consider revising the proposed elementary school library budget for next year. School libraries play an important role in the development of competent students who are skilled in the multiple literacies needed in the 21st century. Saving funds by eliminating an elementary school library assistant reduces student access to strong school library programs and denies equal access for all students to the shared resources and information skills instruction crucial for students to learn and thrive in the 21st century. The elementary school librarians are funded as half-time librarians. The other half, they are funded as technology integrators. A reduction in the full-time library assistant will result in the following program changes. The library space will be closed when the librarian is teaching classes, leaving students without the flexibility to use the space at the time they need it during the school day. Student access to the maker space program at Harold Markham School will be significantly reduced or eliminated and teachers will have significant challenges finding opportunities during the day to plan and collaborate with the librarian. Multiple studies have affirmed there is a clear link between school library media programs and student academic achievement. Across the United States, research has shown that students in schools with good school libraries learn more, get better grades, and score higher on standardized test scores than their peers in schools without libraries. Cutting back on the district's library media program at a time when students need more help with literacy, not less, and, I'm sorry, and more instruction in dealing with the effective use of information could cause a serious effect on students' achievement. Certified licensed library media specialists are trained to select excellent resources to encourage student reading and support the curriculum, to give instruction in 21st century skills, and to co-teach with every teacher, every teaching style, and every learning style. The library media assistants support this ability by performing the daily operations necessary to keep the library open and running while the librarians are in the classroom. These duties would fall to the librarians to perform. Additionally, the assistants are a constant presence in the library and know all of the students and staff in the school, supporting the community's social and emotional learning. Consistency, connections, and relationships are important for students in this age group. We would like to propose adding the elementary library assistant position back into next year's budget, which would increase the proposed budget by 31,033. We understand these decisions- We understand these decisions are difficult. There is a lot of pressure to decrease our per-pupil cost. Keeping the assistant position in our budget will ensure our students have equitable access to the resources and instruction needed to be successful. Please let us know if we can provide you with more information. Respectfully submitted, Michelle Marino. The HMS Librarian and Technology Integrator. Michelle Bowman, HMS Library Assistant. Karen Locke, MSS Librarian and Technology Integrator. Kim Sink, MMS Library Assistant. Donna Zecher, HMHS Librarian. Ann Charley Betts, HMHS Library Assistant.
Thank you, Deb. Okay, we will open the presentation by Bill Chapin to the audience. If you have questions, come up to the mic, please. This one right here. This one right here.
Very quick question. How much is the savings for cutting that library assistant?
Thirty.
The amount that was mentioned in the letter is $31,033.
So if we had an extra $31,000 plus, we could keep that library assistant? Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
I think Bill has an answer.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Morse, 396 Park Avenue, right up the road up there. I remember last year when we were at the bond hearing discussions, we were informed that the state had a two-year moratorium on state aid. Well, I was very disappointed, as we all were, and sort of put it out of my radar. It was called to my attention today that moratorium ended for 2020. So have you applied, since we've not, certainly not started construction or even secured the bond? Has application been made for state aid, from the state aid building fund? And just-
The district's not eligible for state aid. The state has told us, based on our timeline, we are not eligible.
Even though its construction and the bond have not occurred?
Pursued every avenue when we were told our timeline didn't meet.
Can I ask when you were told that?
Cheryl, who did we talk to about that? So what they do is every other year is when you have to submit an application. Unfortunately, we did not have the information available to us to be able to submit, and so we were not able to do that.
I believe it would have had to have been submitted last fall? Because the moratorium ended in September, even though the money wasn't becoming available till January.
They told us that we did not need to submit an application because they weren't going to be accepted. We were not showing the other community, there was other communities that were told the exact-
Oh, I'm sure. There was only a few million dollars available, and it was a timing-
Pursued every avenue when we were told.
It was a timing thing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
No, go ahead.
Rita Blanchard from Farden Corner Road. I'm a mom, a housewife, run a house. I can make budget cuts, and it's extraordinary to me, the things that we can't do without. I got two very successful young men that graduated from this school without all this. Those K-12 schools, those 52 schools that were mentioned that were right smack dab in the middle of, are they all rural towns, just like ours with no industry hugging taxpayers? Or is it like London Dairy in Nashville?
That was, those are numbers in terms of just looking at the expense side. So they were, they were light districts with a K through 12, single SAU, right? So it's, so they're only one, they're only one town.
It goes from Bedford to Grovetan, I mean, it's all over the place. It's 52 K through 12. Some are small towns, some have industrial like Bedford is a K-12, so 52 K through 12 have a high school, have an elementary.
And so revenue side.
Right. They have revenue. I know those southern towns have revenue.
I'm sorry. That was the, a number of costs per, a cost per student. That, that chart just was showing the expenses side.
Early in the presentations, the library assistant was cut. We just mentioned, somebody just mentioned they wanted her back, him back. You had presented that we could put that person's position in the contingency fund.
Perhaps if we felt there was a need, if there was enough of a need for that, we could utilize some of the contingency fund to use that library assistant. But that, that would be, you know, at the, at the jurisdiction of the superintendent. I mean, the superintendent, we, we could recommend where, where, where we would like to see those particular funds being spent, but the superintendent would determine where, you know, the best place would be for that to be used.
When something comes out of that contingency fund, how is that decision made? Does somebody just write a check? Or does that come before you guys? Or does it go before the selectmen? How does that happen?
That'll, so that'll, that'll go in front of the school board. So it's very, it's a very transparent piece that will be, you know, it will need to be approved at a school board meeting to be able to make that transfer.
Okay.
And, and there will be some discussion about it. You know, we have this contingency fund for a particular, you know, for, you know, basically for, you know, the money that we raise, the money that's in there, the superintendent will make an argument as to why we need to use it, and it'll be up to the school board to vote to whether we want to use it in that manner or not.
Okay, good. So my next, is that the same, you guys gotta educate me here, I'm kind of new to this game. I quit playing in like 2004.
Okay.
Is the general fund, is that this contingency fund?
That's different. The general operating fund, or the, in the general operating budget, what we're raising for, okay, that, those, those pieces are, are spent on how the superintendent sees things to run his school. I mean, that's how, that's how that, that basically is gone. We, we give superintendent jurisdiction to use money from, you know, the operating budget. That's his budget. But contingency fund is separate.
Okay, because I'm thinking the contingency fund is what we used to call a general fund. Is it the slush fund? I recognize that term, too.
No, contingency is, is, is a fund that we would raise money for, again, anticipating things or trying to anticipate things that we haven't budgeted for in the operating budget. So we currently do not need five sections of kindergarten. We currently do not need four sections of third grade, okay? We currently are budgeting for three sections of sixth grade. If we get an increase of teacher, if we get an increase of, of students, you know, that come into each, okay, we're not going to take that from operating. The superintendent would need to come to the school board and say, hey, guys, you know, we have an increase in eight kids on the second grade going into third grade class. I really feel it is in the best interest, you know, to have that four sections as opposed to the three. We're just, we're, we're contingents, we're putting money aside.
Okay. I think that's what we used to call it back in the old days, the general fund. That being said, where we might need to, like shuffle teachers around or push the desks together because of extra kids.
Yes.
Okay. How many kids? I asked this at a meeting a couple of weeks ago. We have 10, I was told, tuition students.
Roughly.
That pay $15,000 a year. We saw upon this board, people, you and I are paying $17,775 a student. How horrible of them.
I see it as a deficit.
That being said, we guesstimated that roughly $150,000 was going into a fund from 10 tuitions at 15 grand. Who's, where is that $150,000?
The $150,000 is another line item, okay, that the voters will vote on as a, as a separate fund. And I think that the reason why we kept it in contingency is we wanted to keep it, keep those dollars as transparent as we possibly could. That's not going into the operating budget. It isn't, it isn't a situation where we're going to raise it and then we don't need it type of situation and then find some other place to spend it. That is a fund that's going to be kept separate, that if a few things that might happen down the road, if they hit, we will need that contingency.
So that $150,000 is going into the contingency fund?
Correct.
So right now, we're going to be at $300,000 in net contingency funds?
So it's our revenue loop. So the tuition, the tuition youngsters, that comes in as pure revenue. That is, that is all-
What was on the line? I didn't see it.
So it's, it's in our revenue. If you look at our revenue sheet, it's for tuition students. Now, it's all, not every student pays $15,000 because we have a program that reduces the cost for teachers. And we believe having teacher-students from out of town in our schools is really good for teachers and is good for our community, and it is, it is pure profit. So when we take, when we take a student in, there's not a commensurate $15,000 or cost to go with it. That's just a revenue add.
Okay, wait, stop. You're telling me it's not a profit? The teacher's childrens are not a profit? They, they, you said they get a discount, they are not considered a profit or a profit?
They get a discount, but that money that comes in is additional revenue.
Yes.
And it doesn't change our expense side. We don't add another teacher because of this. It's just revenues coming in.
That's where I'm going with this.
Right.
Are we going to need another student, another teacher because we've got tuition students? Or we have teachers?
That's a great, that's a great, that's a great question.
My other question is-
Rita, Rita, you've gone over your three minutes.
Well, we, we can answer, we, we can answer that. Whenever you have a tuition student that comes in, that comes to the school board. And we determine if there's a seat, if there's, you know, if we are at, again, we're not going to tuition in four kids in that third grade class, okay, only to use contingency to pay for an extra teacher. Does that make, does that make sense?
It does.
So it, it, we, we're not, we, we're looking, what Steve's trying to say is that if we have empty seats in a particular class, and it makes sense to have a tuition kid come in, Steve's saying, we're not getting another teacher for that. We're not needing to rent another space. We're getting another kid. So that, in a sense, is sheer revenue. I mean, it's sheer, sheer profit, you know, that's, that's coming in, regardless of what the dollar number might be.
Do these teachers' children that come in as students add a discount? Is that part of their benefit package?
It is. It is not in the collective party group. We wanted, the board wanted the flexibility to be able to apply that when it was appropriate as opposed to when entitled without a contract.
And how much of a discount do they get?
Depends on the number of years and the number of students. So if you're here for the first five years, things like 50% they pay. And then if it's a teacher for like 10 to 20 years, it's like a 30 or 40%.
I think it's important to point out that the discount is not strictly, you don't have transportation for these kids. That's part of the differential.
No, I'm, I'm looking at classroom size and-
But it's a good point. It's a very good point. The board wants to make sure that we don't accept a tuition and require another teacher. So we only accept it if it's room.
Perfect. And that's with tuition and teacher students?
That's correct. I'll go with that.
So I'm, I'm not sure on why we're asking for another $150,000 in net contingency fund if we're going to have in their tuition money.
Tuition money is not in the contingent. Tuition money comes in-
So, so, yeah, if we have kids that are in town, like, you know, if, if somebody moves into town tomorrow, they're going to have a second grade, they're going to have a second grade or third grade kid. So we could have 10 families move into town before, you know, we're, we're planning our budget now. These kids could move into town.
The word's out on our tax bills. Let me just tell you that. That won't be happening, I doubt.
Maybe. But that, that, again, if it doesn't happen, we don't use it.
But we keep asking for it.
It's just, in the event we need-
I like receipts. I like receipts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, Cheryl? Is there anyone that wants to speak before Cheryl? Cheryl, you have spoken once, okay? Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Sabrina Dunlap, Woold Hill Road. I want to start by saying thank you, since I think a lot of people don't realize you all are volunteers, school boards volunteers, select boards volunteers, all the committees in town that make this town a great place, we're all volunteers. So I just wanted to say thank you. I know this is, this is not the easiest thing. So I don't have, I don't have anything super helpful, I don't think, in terms of dealing with our tough situation. I just have some, some thoughts I'd like to share. I am here to ask you to support the budget as proposed. I think any further reductions will have a really negative impact on our students and our schools. I attended a PTA meeting last week where Steve Chamberlain walked us through the budget, and we heard there's basically nothing left to trim. I actually think the reductions go too far as we are losing teachers and programming. But I understand this is a process of compromise, and it seems like this is the best we're going to do. I'd also like to briefly address a few of the narratives I've heard around town about the schools and taxes. We can disagree on where and how to spend money, but the blanket statements people toss around about irresponsible spending by the schools is misguided and not helpful. It's easy to sit on the outside and complain. It is easy to say, oh, we should just make more cuts without, without thinking about what that actually means for people. But running a small school district in a property poor town in a state that does basically nothing to support public education is not easy. And at the very least, the superintendent, principals, teachers, and other administrators deserve our respect. There are also a lot of fixed costs and a lot of unknowns each year. We just heard about some of them, like how many students will we have next year? As for fixed costs, there's nothing we can do about them. We're contractually and legally obligated to cover certain costs and services as a school. This is out of the school board's and administrator's hands. Finally, I'd like to point out, we have been having this debate for a very long time. It's a challenge we share with many other towns, including towns with much bigger tax bases. My mom recently gave me a bunch of old Concord monitors from when she and my dad went to middle school in Hopkinton. They're both almost 70s, so these were from like the 1960s. I read an article, they were having the same debates. Some of you might remember, they were having the same debates back then. And I think, you know, things are only getting more difficult. We live in a state where more and more costs are pushed down onto municipalities. And I, my point in saying this is that we live in a state that neglects education, and that is hard. I mean, you know, some of you have said none of this is easy. And I know, because we've had to make hard decisions on the select board and doing our budget, too. And the tax burden on our residents, I'm a resident, too, we're all residents, is a huge concern. We are just in a very challenging position. There are not many places to go for relief. I would encourage everyone to bring this issue to the State House and vote for reps and senators and a governor who supports public schools in New Hampshire. I would end by saying, please approve the budget as proposed. We have squeezed and squeezed the schools. I think any further reductions will be incredibly detrimental to the well-being of our students. I would also add, we cannot pit the old against the young, parents against non-parents. We all love this town. We all take care of each other here. This is just a really tough situation. But again, I think the proposed budget is the best we can do in striking a balance. And we are so fortunate to have such high-performing schools and a community that cares about them, and I hope we'll keep it that way. Thank you.
Amanda Gilman, 168 West Ridge Circle. First, I apologize in advance if my message comes across as being harsh or too pointed, for that is not at all my intent. Rather, I hope to give everyone some thoughts to ponder and consider over this budget and future budgets. I'm not going to belabor the pros and cons of all the hard work that our fabulous school board members have put in here, the difficult decisions that they have already made. I simply seek to pull everyone back and consider the big picture. In my heart, I agree wholeheartedly, 100% with Sabrina Dunlap. I really do. But in my head, the following are the thoughts in my head. I'm afraid that we, as a town, are staring down the face of a fiscal crisis. It is looming and growing larger by the year, more specifically, by the 20 years that we have to repay in the future, the nearly $10 million bond. Next year, we begin bond repayment at an estimate of nearly $850,000. So our next year's school budget begins with $850,000. So our next year's school budget begins with $850,000. That bond repayment schedule stays relatively level for the next five years. It slowly decreases to $750,000 after five years. This means for the next five, our school budget is automatically going up a minimum of 3/4 of a million dollars each year. And as I have heard said surrounding the budget before, we haven't even bought our pencils yet. Nor have we figured in the rising teacher salaries for the next three years due to the increased compensation required to shift the healthcare costs, to shift to healthcare cost sharing. Mind you, this is a necessary expense. I agree with it. It brings us closer in line with the healthcare benefits offered by other districts whereby the taxpayer no longer funds 100% of the healthcare, but it's an added future expense. So those are the given fixed costs. But what if we grow? What then? As I see it, we have already outgrown the bond that will begin construction next year. Remember, a majority of that nearly $10 million is being spent on maintenance, neglected maintenance, from the last 10 years. Over, only a small amount of that money is actually being used for growth. May I also point out that the four classrooms being built are already accounted for today, meaning we need those classrooms yesterday. The additional four classrooms allow for art and music to once again have proper classrooms rather than being instructed in the children's homeroom from a cart. And it will allow a second grade class to actually have a proper classroom again instead of a 500 square foot half-size room that I call a closet, where they currently occupy this year. The teachers will likely get this closet back as their break room with the addition, and then there will be one additional classroom. So if one of the Harold Martin School grades increases to five, say kindergarten, already projected at 86, we have space. Or perhaps the special instruction groups can once again return to learning in a classroom rather than on a table in the hallway outside the library. And that is if we do indeed get four classrooms out of the project and one isn't lost in renovation. We're hoping for four. Regardless, the point is this addition is not a plan for the future. It is merely making up for our lack of planning in the past. It is a catch-up bond that we will have to pay for with future funds. And while I'm going down this road of what if, what if our 20-plus, I can't remember the exact number of years unfortunately, year-old underground oil tank at the hosp, at the high school that we discussed last year suddenly fails and needs to be replaced? This is a legitimate concern. I admit, I was definitely one of the citizens and strongly opposed replacement of the tank for over $100,000 at the time, and I stand by that decision. But nonetheless, failure of this tank is a real possibility for the future. It's not imminent, but it's something we need to plan for. What if the classes heading to Maple Street School in the next five years grow and we need more classrooms there, too? I'll end the what-if exercise here, but it brings me to my final point, planning for our future. If any of these other, or any other what-ifs occur, we cannot afford another bond. Can you imagine another bond payment on top of this one? We can't support it. Several leading bodies, including the National School Board Association, recommends annual savings of 2% to 4% of the replacement cost of all facilities for continued repair and replacement and basic maintenance be set aside. This year's budget has 140,000 going to the maintenance trust, the most we have ever done, with plans to promptly spend it all, thus leaving us with 72,000. Now, this money does need to be spent. I agree 100%, that's not the point. Rather, it's that 140,000 is hardly 2% to 4% of the replacement cost of our facilities. My issue with this year's budget is nearly the same as my issue with last year's budget and the 10 budget years before this one. We are not planning for the future. Yes, the superintendent began a capital improvements plan last year, a huge, huge step, really. But if we don't fund it and save adequately for the future, having a plan doesn't matter. I submit to you, fellow parents of Hopkinton School students, fellow taxpayers, and our town leaders, that being what is often referred to as pro-school is not only about providing for the children in school today, but also planning for the children of our future. I'm a parent of two young children in the school system, and I want them to have it all, I really do, but not on the backs of the future students. Our current students in HMS and all three buildings, really, have less-than-ideal facilities right now, in part because the previous 10 years consisted of mostly spending in the moment, with 750 to 1 million-plus-dollar budget increases for several of recent budget years. I implore you to all change your thinking of what pro-school really means, thinking about your own kids today as much as it means thinking about the children of the next several years. We need a few budget-lean years to even begin to adequately plan for the future. Our current level of spending increase is not sustainable in our little town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the gentleman up there, please.
I'm Rob Dappas. I'm from Woodwells Garrison. So I'd like to start by thanking all the, everybody who's volunteered their time for this process. I really appreciate that, and I appreciate how civil I've seen, for the most part, everybody be to each other even as they disagree on these tough questions. I will say that I feel like the mocking tone in that letter that you read, Ms. Haynes, has no place in this, this setting. I feel like if there's any place where we should be able to be civil to each other, it's right here where we are looking each other in the eye, and so I hope we'll, we'll all try to sort of rise to that level. You know, I, I don't envy you, the position that you're in with these very difficult choices. I think, you know, I watched the comments from the last budget committee meeting, and Mr. Houston, I think the comments that you raised about the changing chemistry of the town are very real, and they worry me. And so, so it makes this stuff all that much more difficult, especially when you look at the, the costs that are coming. But I think the example of the library assistant illustrates the kind of tough choices that the superintendent and his staff have had to make along the way and that the school board has had to make. And, you know, I'm sure those are decisions that they took lightly, and, and so I didn't hear any kind of hyperbole about, you know, stealing milk and cookies from children. I didn't hear any kind of indications of sort of irresponsible short-term spending in the description of the budget. I thought it was very sort of even-handed and rational. So I guess I would ask that for those people who do feel like this is an, either an irresponsible budget or that some, but, some cuts could be made without any sort of real impact on the quality of education, to quantify that and to say, you know, where, where Bill's talking about a kindergarten with five sections, if there's going to be something near 100 kids, what they think an acceptable number of students is. I know that there are elementary school classes where there's 30 or 35 children to a classroom, and if you've ever spent time with that many kids at a time, I don't think that's a healthy environment either. So as I said, these are really tough choices. I appreciate that. I think this is a responsible budget, as tough as it is. I think the kinds of relief that Mr. Traum mentioned for the seniors and disabled, while they're a very imperfect way to try to mitigate the changes to the chemistry of the town, I think that they're the best that we can do while we wait for some kind of structural change to head off the, the crisis that may be coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other people that would like to speak for the first time?
Hi, my name is Sabrina Stanwood, and I'd like to thank everyone for the effort that they've put into all this, and thanks for listening to public comments. I do urge the budget committee to vote for the school operating budget as put forward. Please do not cut any more out of it. Let's focus our efforts on increasing state and federal aid for education. I am willing to work on that. I'm willing to help out with that. But my five-year-old daughter, you know, goes to school here, so please, please don't cut any more of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other people that would like to speak for the first time? Cheryl was next for the second time, and then Barney, okay?
Thank you. This is brief. Just to clarify, is it, do I understand correct that we charge all tuitioned-in students the same price, whether they're students of, children of teachers or not?
No.
No? Okay. Is it renegotiated each year as our student prices change?
The, the board sets the tuition for students, and the teachers want his percentage of that.
Okay.
So it does change based on a formula.
What about, and this may be somewhere in the revenue stream, and I haven't seen it, what about reciprocity agreement? I happen to live next door to a revolving house, and I mean that respectfully, and they, as soon as the kids graduate, they leave town, it fills back up again. The current family that left, one student is still here, and will, because they love the school, and they will, they couldn't find a house in Hopkinton, they wanted, she will continue to be educated here. Her parents are paying taxes in another local town. Do we have any agreement with those communities who are collecting the property taxes off that family, that they should be reimbursing us for not sending that child to their school district?
So the board, anytime a student is not in residence in this community, the board has to approve that. Now, there is a practice of, for example, if a student was a senior, a senior year, the board can waive tuition for a senior because if they go to another school, that will change their graduation future. So the only situations that I'm aware of are established residency, and we have a process for that, or the board approves every student who's not resident attending our school.
This particular incident, and it's not, it's not pertinent at all to the situation to get into it too detail, but the point being, and I can understand a senior because of the timelines of when school budgets happened, it's tricky as to whether or not you would be able to get from another school district a full amount for their senior year, and you're really splitting hairs. But when you take a child in, a child, a high school student in that has two or three years left in this school district, then I don't understand why we have not negotiated with other school districts, okay, we have this student, you will at least pay us back from your tax rate.
Any student that is non-resident in this community is either paying tuition.
Right.
Or it's been waived for a circumstance like the senior. So I don't, I'm not aware of any student that is, is living in another town.
Okay.
Going to school here that is now either paying tuition or, you know, something approved by the board.
And the amount that they pay is determined every year?
Determined every year.
By the board? Okay. Thank you.
I hope I'm not wearing out my welcome down here. I would be very interested to hear some feedback from both boards, the select board and the school board, about what Sabrina said about the broken function of state education, state aid to education, and the woman in the green jacket who has already left, I don't remember her name. But it seems to me that that is the missing component, and we go round and round and round about trying to get blood out of a stone on a local level to fund public education when the state is failing us. And I moved here, I'm from New Hampshire originally, had been living in Vermont for 25 years in one of the towns that was called a gold town. It was a wealthy town. We had property taxes, we had state income tax, we had sales tax, we had the whole shebang. And it was a lot cheaper for me to live there in Vermont with all that, in a big house on five acres of land, than it is for me to live here, all in, with the property taxes, even though we don't have state income tax. And there was a meeting of concerned taxpayers the other night, and there was a man, Ralph, I believe, who I, if I understood this correctly, they moved here from Washington State, same thing, that they have a lot of taxes in Washington State, but it is cheaper for them to live there, and they had very good school districts, than it is here. So my point is, other states have figured this out. Other states have figured out how people can live there and not be property taxed to death and still get good education and, and still have other forms of income. So I've never heard any feedback from the boards about how you guys are working. Our state reps, Mel Myler and Dave Luno, are the chair and vice chair of the Education Committee in the House of Representatives. If I understand it correctly, Dave is chairing a state education commission to look into what are the problems and how can we fix them? What are you guys, as our leaders, doing to work with them and keep bringing that to their attention that we need to change on the state level? I would really like to hear some feedback on that.
Thank you.
Might I go first, I guess? Well, certainly Dave, Dave Luno and Mel Myler have been involved in education for a long period of time. So I think they, if anyone knows what's, you know, what's needed, and those two are there. So I feel confident about those two. But I, I think Michelle has always said, we, you know, we budget for, you know, the worst and then hope for the best, and that's sort of what we've been doing. And I think that when you look at the state and what used to be provided by the state, so the path that we've run on, particularly with, you know, retirement, healthcare, and then building aid, has, has all, it was all there at one particular point and then was, was taken away. And then, and many, you know, you remember years ago, building aid was, you know, said by John Lynch, would be going away, and then we were going to potentially bring it back. So I think repair on buildings was neglected for years, thinking the state would, would eventually come back, and they never really have. So I think what you say is valid. The revenue side has always been a problem. It's what, you know, again, would solve a lot of our problems here, and I think the more we, you know, voice and, and people take notice of this town and their, you know, willingness to, to pay for schools, but, but understand that a problem is, is coming down the road, I, I think the better. But we, we do talk about these things, but, yeah, again, we don't, we don't know. I mean, you just don't know, so.
Yeah, and I guess, speaking more for myself than the select board, but I believe that the rest of the select board would agree with me, yes, we have a broken tax system. Yes, we would like some other system, so, on the town side, so we could get more assistance for infrastructure. And, you know, I've personally spoken to our state reps, our state senator, our executive counselor about the situation. You know, I, I guess that's as far as I've gone. And it has come up at the budget committee, the same level of frustration, I'd say.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, Laura Johnson, Main Street. I just want to state my opinion about the, as a former public school teacher, coach, resident, and very opinionated educator, I don't agree with all the decisions of the school board, but I do think because I can't change past spending, I can't change things that happened in the past, I do have kids in the school, I would like to see the budget passed as it has been presented. I also would like to encourage the schools and the school board to look outside the box for solutions in future years. I can personally find a few ways that I think things could be switched around, as I'm sure a lot of other people, to save in spending a little bit, but I do think as things are presented, they should be passed this year.
Your name?
Laura Johnson.
Thank you. Any other?
I'm going to beat that tuition horse to death.
Okay, we've got, hold on.
Go ahead. Go ahead, honey. I'm, I'm looking at our revenue, and I know, I was told at the last meeting that we're 10-ish, is exactly what I was told. Students being tuitioned in at 15 grand a student.
No, that's the piece.
Sir, I'm sorry, yes.
That's the piece that is not, remember, some of these are on reduced tuition for children of non-resident teachers.
Correct. I was unaware of that.
But so.
Okay, so because the, the profit margin here, the revenue is only 70 grand for that, right?
Right, so about half of the people are on reduced tuition, children of teachers.
Another thought, just on something you just said, is it the practice of this board to sit around and wait for somebody to to sit around and wait for somebody to come help us when we fix stuff?
What do you mean?
You said, you said something about when John Lynch was governor, that we thought some aid that went away was going to come back and that may be why we haven't kept maintenance.
I think I was talking more statewide, but when you are thinking that building aid goes away, but the promise from the state level is it'll come back, why would we raise immediately, why would we look to raise locally ten million dollars for a building project when we potentially could apply for something in future years?
Right, I'm not talking about the ten million dollar building project, I'm talking about the repairs that were not done, general maintenance that wasn't done to our buildings.
Okay, well, we have general maintenance funds that we use and we all have deferred maintenance, I'm sure you have deferred maintenance on your houses, I do with mine.
Only as long as my husband can stand the nagging, that's how long it's deferred.
But we do have a maintenance and repair fund that we raise money for in anticipation of things we got to fix during the course of the year.
Okay, because just the list that I've been seeing is, you know, why wouldn't you fix the roof before it got to the stage of that now?
Again, it's-
That's a defer. And it's very costly now to do it versus maintaining it.
I'm not going to disagree with you.
Okay. What are we going to do moving forward with routine maintenance? Is somebody going to be overseeing routine maintenance? I mean, how does this work? I don't know. If my roof leaked, that would be fixed immediately.
Again, you know, we have, we have a fixated number of resources that we have, as every family does, you know.
Right, but every year we give money for maintenance, every year.
Right, but we try to anticipate what future costs will be to fix some of the things, like an AC unit or something where a leaking roof. I think the leaking roof situation is, we have a more, we have a larger building project that's coming online, so we don't want to potentially, you know, if you're going to get a new roof, you know, you don't want to sink thousands and thousands of dollars to-
Right, if we potentially don't get that project, what are we going to do? I'm working really hard to get this budget voted down. So my next question is, what are you guys going to do if at the school meeting, this budget is voted down? I'm like beating on doors, people, going, vote this down, it's irresponsible.
Right, so I think the superintendent has tiers that if we have a budget that gets voted down, okay, I think the superintendent has given a clear idea of what, you know, potentially that would look like and what our, what impact that would have on the schools and the voters would have to make that decision, whether they want to go down that path or not.
Okay.
So that's, that's the answer.
So how do we find out what that path is before town meeting? How do we get those tiers?
I think we have on the website and I think all these meetings, every meeting that Steve's ever had with the school board, with the Budget Committee, the Budget Committee's meetings, these are all public.
Oh, I know, no, I know, because if I'm not here, I'm online.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm always going to-
So I just, I would, I only say that because we went at, you know, we've had meetings at great length talking about the repercussions of a reduced budget. And despite that, you know, the school board felt it necessary to reduce Steve's budget by three hundred thousand when he initially presented it. So just to give you an indication, those things that were reduced were known by the school board and we were very informed at the time by our superintendent what the costs, you know, would be. And we still decided to, you know, make the hard decisions. So it's, it's not easy, you know, but this isn't, we aren't driving, what was the Lamborghini? I mean, it should be clear that we're not, this isn't just, you know, that the most anybody can spend, you know. I mean, we are aware, we are very aware of the tax ramifications in this town.
Because I have talked to several citizens that tell me their house, they're going to be out of here by January first. And I, and I have been told-
And I hear it too.
I have been told by someone that maybe this is not the town for my husband and I. We've been here almost forty years.
I, and you think, I don't hear it either. I've heard, you know, I hear it from both sides. I think it was well, well, it was, you had, you had-
I'm just saying, I'm working this hard to make sure that we figure out a way to do a budget that is sustainable for this town.
Appreciate that.
Everybody would go look for that.
Appreciate that.
Hi, Amanda Gilman again. Here I go again, harping on facilities, repair and maintenance, but I would like to speak to the state of New Hampshire, cost per pupil by district that Mr. Chapin mentioned. We're ranked number twenty-seven out of the fifty-two schools K through twelve in New Hampshire. And on the surface, this looks like we're actually smack dab in the middle, looks like we're really doing a great job, meaning we're providing a quality education with the budget that we have. But I submit, and I submit that we have an above-average education even, but it looks like on that graph that we're providing it at an average cost. And I'm wondering if we should look closer, look into the spending on facilities, repair and maintenance, for the same fiscal year, I think it paints a different picture if you compare the other towns in this graph to ours. For example, in, this is fiscal year eighteen nineteen on this ranking, where it came from, Bo, for example, who ranks lower than us in terms of cost, they do a better job at cost per pupil, in the K through twelve schools, they're number ten and we're twenty-seven. They spent two point one million in their facilities line, however, that includes wages and it's hard for me to compare apples to apples and I haven't given Mr. Chamberlain the benefit of the doubt and had a chance to chat, chat with him about what we actually spent that year, but when I look back at our facilities line, it's, instead of two point one million, it's one point seven million. And when I subtract out what appears to be supervision and operation of facilities, is that wages or no? Oh, Michelle. That's wages and benefits, yes. And then operating building services?
That's kind of true with my, a lot of these, those type of things.
Okay, gas, I'm sorry.
Repair maintenance, because we do a three-year wrap for repair maintenance.
So is, is operating building services, does that, you're saying that gas and-
All of these things are all-
Are all wrapped up? Okay, so Bo's was much more separated and I could pull out gas and I could pull out electricity, but theirs was nine, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that they spent in that year on their facilities, repair and maintenance. I don't know what we spent, but I submit that perhaps it was a slightly less amount. And if you figure that back in, it doesn't put a smack dab in the middle anymore. We're not spending enough on our buildings.
Thank you. We will close public testimony.
May I?
Yes.
My name is Steve Reddy, I live at two sixty Kearsar Jav. I'm definitely not advocating putting the three hundred thousand dollars back into the budget. I think what the school board did and the Budget Committee ratified was prudent, given the mood of the town and the, you know, across the board increases that we all face in our budgets. However, I do think it's important for people to understand that our costs often get cut our payroll because that's our largest cost, so I would just like to ask maybe the superintendent to explain exactly that three hundred thousand dollars. That did impact some people, did it not? We cut a teacher and a numeracy specialist, but perhaps just for the audience, if you could just explain the impact of that three hundred thousand dollar cut or reduction.
Sure, I'm fine, but the significant portion was a sixth grade teacher, was a library media assistant, and the numeracy assistant, I think those are the major components, the sixth grade, as Mr. Chapin spoke to. We believe best practice is in sixth grade, beginning of middle school model, math, English, science, history, type of focused teachers that will be changed. So that is the majority of the staffing issues and the three hundred thousand dollar cut. We also, oh, we cut sections, we cut assigned sections at the high school, we cut sections at the high school.
Okay, we're going to cut public testimony, we really have to.
I just wanted to clarify, did they actually cut sections?
No.
Or did you cut the increase? So did you actually take away existing sections of today or is it a lack of increase of sections for next year?
Right, now, that's, in the high school, assigned was one that was offered this year that we will reduce next year. Family consumer was an addition, we had twenty students who wanted family consumer on a waitlist that didn't get it, so that's a section for us. So it was required by enroll, by registrations and enrollment, but it would be increased based on students who wanted the course and would, same thing, it was an addition, but it was addition based on student interest that we would have staffed with our, you know, fifteen to twenty kids.
So was that three increased positions in one?
So, no, one current issue.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. We, we have been doing public comments and, and I asked if there were any people that had not talked one time and wanted to, and we didn't have any person, so we took some people that were talking for the second time. And so we really have to close because we have a lot of deliberations to do. Okay?
Okay, but this time, make sure you let us know that it's public comments, right? Because it says right on the end, that's a school public comment.
I, I don't understand what you're saying, Frank. Well, I don't know what the screen is saying because I'm not looking there, but I, when, after Ginny Haynes read a letter and Deb Norris, then I opened it up to the audience for their participation and people have been standing up doing that. So we have been doing that all along. I asked if there were any, two people wanted to speak for the second time and I asked if there were any people that wanted to speak for the first time and I didn't get any person and then all of a sudden, when I'm ready to close it, then some people want to talk for the first time.
That was on school issues, we were going to discuss questions on school issues and that was continued.
But what do you want to talk on?
It's public comments.
Okay, each one has had public comments, each section of the budget. Pardon me? Okay, Frank, I don't know what you want to do. Come up to this mic and speak.
Just want to save you some room.
It's easier.
Put your timer on, three minutes.
You probably did, Frank.
That caused the budget.
Does it work this way?
Yep, that works.
Much better. Okay, I just want to make some general comments on the budget in general, on all budgets, as far as being way over budget, as far as school and as far as the town. Taxes on the average home has gone up over five hundred dollars last year and it looks like it could go over five hundred dollars again this year on the average home, which again will drive a lot more people out of town. And when people who are on a fixed, yeah, fixed income, like social security or whatever, and have no children in school, leave town, sell their homes, usually it's people with children and that bring more kids into the community. And the more kids you bring into the community, the higher the school budget will go. And this is a continuous cycle every year. When they first built it, when they first built this school, the average school budget was fifty dollars a year. The average budget was a hundred dollars a year for the town. It had a brand-new high school, a new grade school, and everybody got along fine. We had plenty of industrial, Eaton Brothers and Davis was across the street, we had a paper mill going seven days a week, and many other industrials. Now you're talking about bringing more industrials, but with the tax rate the way it is, nobody industrial is going to come to this town. People continue to move out. New people can come in with more students. And we would continue our cycle, that in five years from now, we come back here, there'll be three or four more hundred kids in school, you're going to need more classrooms, more schools, more, more everything. And basically, everything is, the school department is overrated, not overrated, but is the main function of the town, to improve the schools, increase the schools, cause more, get more people to come to town and put the kids in the school. This can continue and pretty soon the town is going to be square, nobody is going to afford to live here anymore, except the doctors and lawyers making two, three hundred thousand dollars a year. I know you want a new fire truck. I want a new car too, but I talked to social security, they said, we ain't going to help you. You're going to have to wait till you earn the money. There's a lot of towns that apply for fire trucks. I know Hennecker applied for a new fire truck, Homeland Security gave them four hundred something thousand dollars for a fire truck. Hundreds of thousand dollars for a bridge to nowhere. There's room for, into wetland, funds for carpet, but nobody applying for anything in this town. All figures just on everything. But we just haven't got the funds. Great to have tuition students, if all the students that came to town were tuitioned, we wouldn't have the problem. But unfortunately, when they move to town, they're not tuitioned. So basically, when I leave my house, which probably soon, waiting to go in, a few more kids are coming to the town. And someone, that's another sixty thousand dollars a year. Now, the people that are left are going to have to add to their budget and it's going to continue to go on and on and on. This spending has got to stop. Could you make me?
Thank you. Okay, we will close public testimony. Thank you very much. We are going to take a break and then we will start deliberating on the budget. Okay, so we're gonna...
I'll share.
We're going to take them in the same order that we did the hearing, okay? So first, we will go with the budget for the Hockington Village Precinct.
Okay, Tom, you're up.
This is now the new one because of the town. It's done.
All right, right, right.
We didn't know what the new one was going to be.
Okay, so good, so I will just, in a...
Folks, we are going to, folks, we are going to start our deliberation. So if you could just be a little quieter, please? Okay, we will start with the Hockington Village Precinct. And Tom, do you want to make a motion? Do you?
Um, yeah, they're making a motion to approve the Hockington Village Precinct budget.
And what is the amount?
Just to make sure they don't mess it up. Uh, the amount is $17,791.
To be raised by taxes, right?
Correct.
Okay. Motion's been made for the, to approve the Hockington Village Precinct budget for $17,791. Is there a second to that? Seconded by, uh...
Jonathan.
Jonathan. Discussion? Okay, are you ready for the question?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the budget for the Hockington Precinct of $17,791, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous.
Just a point of clarification, that money to be raised by taxes or to be appropriated for the budget? I think you need certainly appropriations for the budget.
Appropriations?
I think that's the total, is that correct? I think you need that also.
To raise and appropriate?
Right. The total...
Can you make a second motion?
Total appropriations. Not just the money to be raised, but the total appropriations.
Okay, what's the total appropriations?
Total appropriations is $108,277.
So that motion?
Yeah, so they can make a motion to appropriate.
Okay.
I'll second that too.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that's an approval by the Budget Committee. Next is the Kentucky Village Precinct budget.
I move to approve the appropriations recommended of $513,860 to the village precinct.
Second.
Did you say raise and...? Yes.
Did you get the second on that, Tammy? Mark?
I did not say raise and appropriate, which I should do.
Okay.
To raise and appropriate.
So say aye again, please.
I move to raise and appropriate, uh, recommended $513,860 to the Kentucky Village Precinct.
And you second that, Jonathan?
Yes.
Okay. Or whoever it was, you, I'm sorry, Mark.
I third Mark's second.
It was Mark.
Don't jump in front of me.
It was Mark that did it, I'm sorry.
I want the record to reflect that Mark Zankel seconded it.
You can fight over my articles.
Okay, and we will vote again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the vote is in a affirmative, and I so declare it. So we've got two budgets under our belt. That's why we, that's why we always start with those two. Yeah, you can't go home.
No, no.
You've got to wait for the rest of us. Okay, now is the town operating budget.
Ours is a little longer. Our move that the Budget Committee approve Article III of the Town Meeting Warrant, which is a bond issue for road, bridge, and culvert rehabilitation, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2.2 million gross budget for the planning, design, rehabilitation, and construction of existing town roads, bridges, and culverts, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $2.2 million of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33 as amended, to authorize the Select Board to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, which may be available for said project, and to comply with all laws applicable to said project, to authorize the Select Board to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity, and other items thereof, and to authorize the Select Board to take any other action or to pass any other vote relative thereto. Note that this is, requires a two-third vote of the Town Meeting.
Thank you.
I would just go, do you have in front of you the articles?
If I don't have to read them, that's great.
No, that, then we get it really on the...
Yeah.
Okay, I'll read them.
I guess glad to read it. Thank you, thank you.
Second?
A second by Bill Chapin, Jr.
Is it appropriate time for a little discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I, I just wanted to say that back in June of last year, June 14th, we discussed tax rates, and this is a quote, "As part of carrying out its responsibility," meaning ours, "of promoting a responsible and acceptable tax burden, the Hockington Budget Committee would like to offer initial guidance to the Select Board and Hockton School District in anticipation of the 2020 and 2021 budgeting and associated contract negotiations. Looking forward three years, we currently recommend adherence to a maximum of 4% a year net tax increase." That was something we talked about. And I just want to say how I feel about this process, and it's not just the, it's the town and the school. We're budgeting by crisis with no end in sight, and we have substantial known increases in 2021 and 2122, the years ahead. Like climate change, we may not like it, but this is our reality. And I think when we get to this point in the process and, and things are over in queue, and we don't think about it, we don't have the will to go to the state and start working on this and fixing it.
I, I think we've informally gone to the state. And you, you mentioned climate change. That's one of the reasons we have the culvert issues.
Right, I'm just saying, I'm just...
Yeah, and, and the 4%, I raised that with the Select Board, you know, many times, that was the direction I was hearing. Our operating expense budget... Our operating expense budget is five point something percent, but that includes the shared, uh, money that we'd be getting back from the precinct. So actually, our operating expense portion of the budget is in the fours. Uh, it's the other items in the, uh, the fixed asset, let me call it, category that, uh, are, are crisis items that have, you know, driven ours up to the seven percent range. But I appreciate your comments, certainly.
Yeah, I think we get to this point, and once things go through and are finished, we don't have the, the will to keep pushing forward and going to where we need to go, to the state or the residents of the town, 'cause we're just gonna face this again next year, and it never gets solved. We, we are using the same formula, and we're still getting the same result.
Okay, I, I, I totally agree with you. And that was one of the reasons I, in the presentation, mentioned, you know, areas we are looking to expand the revenues, you know, by getting a, a part-time economic development, uh, position to hopefully bring in more tax revenues, that we're working, you know, and trying to help out with the solar array to get more tax revenues in without increasing expenses. The Select Board is extremely aware, and, you know, we're doing what we can facing the situation as we have it. No, I, I, I appreciate your comments. I, I think that everybody on the Select Board would agree with your comments.
Thank you, thank you, Jenny.
Can I ask one, one question about, about the bond?
Sure.
What's, what's the maximum length of time that you think that that work might go over?
The, uh, the work for the culverts, I would assume, would be two years, more or less.
That's what the other bond was, wasn't it? The work was done over.
It was, it lasted, what, four years? Could totally use up the first bond? Yeah.
This, this should happen more quickly, though, since the culverts need to be done.
Yeah.
Yes, yesterday. Did you wanna say something, Mark? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think the, um, the thing that really stuck with me, talking about the roads this year, was, you know, that there's seven and a half million irate of road.
Road, culverts, bridges, et cetera.
That needs to be done. And with the cost of money being so low right now, you know, we should bond as much as the town could handle right now, because the cost of money is incredibly cheap, and the cost of road construction, bridge construction is going up significantly and has the possibility of this life to continue. And so, you know, I'm in support of this. I wish we had the wherewithal to do more, but I don't think we can right now. I think the Select Board was very responsible in thinking about how much can we put forward, given the other needs of the town.
Right, I mean, one of our essential things on the Select Board side was the affordability. You know, what kind of a increase in the tax rate could we realistically, you know, seek? And, uh, that was one half of our driving issue, the other half was the needs.
But to Mark's point, um, regardless of affordability, they have, they have to be done, I mean, it is of your opinion that they will need to be done in the next three to five years, right?
The, the, the culverts are the most important. And, you know, then we'll be relying on the expertise of Dan Blanchett and DPW to let us know, you know, what order things have to be addressed in. Uh, yeah, I mean, there's a possibility that three or four years from now, we may have to request another bond. You know, I, I can't say yes or no at this point.
I guess I'm just a little mindful of Tom, of your presentations, in terms of, I get the argument that money's cheap to borrow right now, but I do like the idea of, as a fundamental sort of paritanship, trying to increase the CIP for both the school and the town, and avoiding bonding every time we need to do something. Like, I, I'm not suggesting, I, I support this, so I'm not, I don't wanna be talking at a school here. I, I, I support this bond, but moving forward, I do think that there's, there's some real, it's a good idea.
I think that, that's kinda where, that's what I was trying to figure out with the, like, how long, how long will this kinda take, kinda question, because I feel like if we could go back, if we could go back in time, I think we'd all agree that we would have just been putting money away so that we wouldn't have to raise a bond, because we all know that there's a huge problem in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. And so, but I think we all recognize that this is something that really needs to happen. So I would, I mean, I'm, I'm kinda on the side of, I, I'd almost say we should just try to raise the eight million or whatever we need, but at the same time, I think that doing this small portion now and then trying to come up with a better, longer-term solution over the next two years, so that, you know, that next time that we do need to raise money for the roads, hopefully we either have some of it, or there's a different launch plan, or, or maybe we don't have to do a bond, or there might be some other issue that we, there might be some other solution we can come up with in two years, but I don't, we don't have that solution now.
The, the other two items where we're putting money in is, we're putting a hundred thousand dollars for the first time into the Capital Reserve Fund that'll be going to this, and, you know, whether next year we decide to put two hundred thousand in. We're also, as we have been for a number of years now, increasing the line item for shimming and paving by five percent. You know, that, this year, that brings in seventeen thousand. But, you know, there are, we're trying to address it in different fashions.
I don't mean to be criticized.
I, I'm not hearing anything anybody says is something I haven't, the board hasn't thought of.
But, but, but I also think when we sort of talk about an arbitrary four percent increase, you know, that at some point, we may wanna consider whether that number is the right number, or whether that number has to be a little bit higher, not so much to have money to spend today, but to start to stockpile some money to spend as we need it, to avoid the bond, and maybe the cost of avoiding bonds, which I think is what you were kinda talking about. Again, I'm not, I'm not making any suggestion of changing anything today, but I, but as you say, Jenny, at some point, we gotta talk about these things, so I, I do, it is an appealing idea to me to start to have a better fund on both school and town to deal with things.
And I would certainly say, I believe the rest of the Select Board is also still here, so, you know, they've heard the, the comments also.
Well, I'd like to applaud the Select Board for finding that one piece that's been so difficult in finding revenue. I mean, uh, these projects, these solar projects, um, are really, you know, you're, you're pioneering out there, you're looking for things, you try, you try things, you know, and, and you, you vet 'em, and, and if they make sense, they, you know, you go through with them. So, continue to do that work as best you can, I, I think that's great for the town.
I, I, on the solar array, Stephen and Neil and myself, to me, have been sort of plowing the field for this concept for in New Hampshire municipality, and, and other towns have, you know, been interested in trying to copy our model.
That's great.
Ken, has there been any movement on that solar project of, of the town and the schools getting wholesale power from that unit?
It's premature for that, the, uh, back a year ago, when we had talked to Grant Apollo, they, it indicated they'd be entertaining that concept, but that's, you know, to negotiate down the road.
Any other discussion? Okay, are we ready to, um, vote on that article? What was the article number?
Article three.
Article three.
Let Neil read it.
Okay, all.
Oh, sorry.
We were going for a vote.
Yeah, go for the vote.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of, uh, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. It is approved?
Article four, the operating budget, I'll move that the Budget Committee approve Article Four of operating budget to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the Budget Committee recommended sum of seven million, seven hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Do you have that, Tammy? Discussion on Article Four? There being no discussion? Are you ready for the question? Okay, all those in favor of Article Four, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the majority has voted.
Okay, um, moving on, I'll move that the Budget Committee approve Article Five, appropriation to Capital Reserve Funds, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars to be added to previously established Capital Reserve Funds as follows. Police, fire, radio replacement, twelve thousand. New and replacement equipment and vehicles for Public Works and Highway Department, two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Road, bridge rehabilitation, a hundred thousand. Police vehicle replacement, twenty-seven thousand. Town hall renovations, twelve thousand, five hundred. Replacement and equipping of ambulance, seventy-five thousand. Fire department vehicle and equipment acquisitions, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred. Library building systems, twenty thousand. Recreation facilities, twenty thousand. Sewer equipment, sludge removal, thirty thousand. Dam maintenance and construction, ten thousand, for a total of eight hundred and nineteen thousand.
Second. By Mark? Okay, any discussion on Article Five? There being no discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? The vote was unanimous by the Budget Committee?
Thank you. I'll move that the Budget Committee approve Article Six, appropriation to expendable trust funds, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seventy-one thousand, five hundred dollars to be added to previously established expendable trust funds as follows. Library buildings and grounds, forty-one thousand. Town facilities, maintenance, twenty-five thousand. Recreation facilities, fifty-five hundred, for a total of seventy-one thousand, five hundred.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do you have a second? Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it was a unanimous vote on Article Six by the Budget Committee?
Okay, thank you. I'll move that the Budget Committee approve Article Fifteen, authorization to expend from paid-by-bag special revenue fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of offsetting the cost of collection and disposal of residential solid waste and such other direct costs as budgeted annually, with said funds to come from the paid-by-bag special revenue funds. No funds to be raised by taxation.
The second Article Fifteen? Any discussion?
Who decides the vendor for the bags?
Who is the vendor?
Or who decides the vendor? Who decides?
The bags are weak.
Neil, could you help me on that?
No, but who decides who, what the vendor is?
Initially, it was a committee that established it.
And then it's just been?
But then it's up to the board beyond that.
Yep.
And they've kept their prices sane, haven't they? Yes. And that's been how many years?
Quality has gone down.
Eight? The qual, quality has gone down?
Isn't it, no? I mean.
Oh, no, they're, they're horrible bags.
They're terrible bags.
Really, we don't have any trouble. I mean, I know a lot of people do, but Tommy and I have the thirteen pound bag, and that's all we use, and, I mean, we cut up, he cuts up a lot of plastic, 'cause I can't cut it, I don't have the strength. But he cuts up a lot of plastic, and it goes in that, I mean, he's unbelievable.
I was on the committee that set up those bags.
Me, too.
Oh, that's right, you're a member, too.
Yeah.
They have, like, different quality levels, but I think it's a little bit gimmicky, because as you grow up in the quality level, the price per bag skyrockets, I'm talking about the price of the plastic itself.
Yeah.
And, so I think we sat, sat on the middle quality to begin with, but then I think the town went to the high point.
Just ask Neil.
Sorry, thank you.
Pull it half full, it helps out the revenue.
That's what I was telling him.
More ways.
Pull it halfway up and register your car.
I think to some people, taking them to conquer, too, not the bags, but the garbage. So Article Fifteen, the motion's been made, and it's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? That was a unanimous vote by the Budget Committee.
Okay, thank you, and the final, uh, article is, I'll move that the Budget Committee approve Article Sixteen, authorization to expend from senior center rental rev, special revenue fund, I'm wearing out, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirteen hundred and eighty dollars for the purpose of offsetting operational and maintenance costs of the slusher center, with said funds to come from the senior center rental special revenue fund. No funds to be raised by taxation. And Janet, why don't you second that?
I will second that. Thank you.
Uh, I, I just have to take a second to, um, to Paula's horn. She does remarkable, and, um, we have never had a director that has done and does what Paula does. Paula goes out if, if we need to have the front yard, not the yard, but the, the sidewalk and so forth, salted. Um, I know we've had some in the past that would not do that, they thought that was the highway department's duties, and they would wait until the har, the highway department came and did it, but she does it. She's painted, um, she painted a half wall in the lobby part of the senior center this year, a dark blue. I mean, what a change it has made in that building, but, you know, she just grabs a paintbrush and the, well, actually, she probably uses the, the roller, but she's unbelievable. Her last thing that she tackled was downstairs in our pool room. We had a pool table in the middle of the, the room, and, um, with the council's approval, we had the pool table turned sideways so that we still could use that, but use that other part of that room, um, for just other things, if people just wanna go down there and talk, or they wanna go down there and read the newspaper, or we have a television down there now, and, um, you know, we can go down and watch television and so forth. And again, she got the brush out and that nice blue paint that she chose, and did one whole wall in the blue, so she is amazing, amazing person, and I can't really toot her horn enough, so, um, I haven't done that for a long time, so I just tooted it, thank you.
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
So, um, we are on Article Fifteen, any discussion on Article Fifteen?
No, sixteen.
I'm sorry, sixteen. Sixteen. Okay, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? It's a unanimous vote by the Budget Committee.
Okay, thank, thank you all.
That ends your budget, right? Thank you. Okay, now we are on the biggest budget. Mr. Bill Chapin.
Now to wait.
Am I going to read all the articles here?
Just the ones that need a Budget Committee vote.
Just the one that needs a, so Article One and then Article Two. The school board adopted the SB, right, we don't need, okay, we're just going to start with Article Three then. So I'd like to move that the Budget Committee approve Article Three. Which is to see if the Budget Committee will vote to raise and appropriate the Budget Committee's recommended amount of $21,416,331 for the support of schools, for the payment of salaries for the school district officials and agents and for the payment of the statutory obligations of the district or to make or to take any other action relation thereto. The Budget Committee vote was seven to three. The school board recommends this article. The article does not include appropriations voted in other warrant articles. The school board vote on this was three to two.
It's the vote.
Sorry, the Budget Committee prior last week, seven, three, but that's still open. So disregard that. Strike that. Do you want me to read it back?
No, no.
Okay. Sorry about that, guys.
You want to read everything except that part, right?
Yes.
So that's what we're voting on.
Any other action there in relation thereto, period?
Yes, thank you. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion?
I think the only thing I just want to say, and it's sort of to pair it with Jenny was saying before, which is that, at least what I was hearing you to say, which is we pay town taxes for sure, but we also pay state taxes and we pay federal taxes. And there's not enough dollars coming back, and this is the problem that we have all the time. There's not enough of those dollars coming back here. So when we hear things like, you know, the politicians taking the pledge or the New Hampshire advantage, I mean, those are policy decisions that affect the stress that we have here. And I know we're not supposed to get into state and federal politics and town meetings, but I do think that it's important that every voter understand that they have a vote and that that vote speaks about how those tax dollars are being spent. And so I just, I just want to make that comment, that I think it's important that we think about the big piles of money that could be allocated in a different way to help us. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of Article Three? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No? No? Nay? Any abstentions? So did you get that vote? It was again a seven to three vote. Okay. By the Budget Committee. And again, I, I just, I mean, as you all know, I've lived in this town forever and a day. And I continue to pay my taxes to help other people pay their children's taxes on what they're getting from the schools and so forth. But I know I can't continue at the pace I'm, I'm paying. And I'm not trying to say a sad story, but when I worked for the state, we were able to not only contribute to our retirement, but we could contribute to what is called ING, I-N-G. And it was a system that we could put money into it and have it as part of our retirement. And I did. For many, many years, I put the maximum I could put in. And I know at one point it was 7,500. And I never, ever thought when I was putting that money away that it was going to be used for taxes. And that is my tax money. And I have been using that for quite a few years now, but I just cannot continue to pay the taxes that I have been paying and my husband. And, you know, it's easy for people to say we can't cut, but we can't add as much to the budget every year that we continue to do. So that's why I voted against it.
I voted for just because last year I felt that as I examined the budget, and I really tried to make that little cut, and I felt good about it. And I felt that there were some things that definitely adjust. This year, as I looked at it, I honestly, and I kept waiting to see if something could be found. I just did not feel comfortable with not voting for the budget because I didn't see any fluff. And I guess I trust the school board, the decision that they made. I thank them for the cuts that they did make. I know it was hard. And I voted for the budget as it was presented without adding anything new, which I feel I'm uncomfortable with. I don't like the cut unfortunately that is going to have to be met, especially after reading that letter. But I know people worked hard to get it to where it was. And I don't like seeing the taxes go up. Since my husband and I built our home here in town, the taxes have increased every year. It's, it's always inflation and we have to keep up with it. There are costs that there, we can't do anything about. And I hope that the select board will continue to help those that they can in town so that they can keep their homes. And I thank the select board also for all the work that they've done. And to what Jonathan and Jenny have said, we have two representatives that I want to thank, Dave Luno and Mel Meyer, for the work that they've done in education at the state level. And I think all of us need to start really becoming as involved as we can, even if it's just with our vote. Because it is. That's where we need the help. And when we say that we have no taxes, well, we do at the state level or we cut taxes down. Well, thank you. And so we're bearing the burden on our property taxes, which is why some people are losing their homes. Please make a difference and vote differently for what's going on in this state because we really are in a crisis and we need to turn it around. I've lived in many places and we've had property taxes. I know that's a bad word, but maybe sometimes we need to reevaluate a situation, think outside of the box because it's been the hardest on our homes. You can make a decision not to go out to dinner or do, go to the moving, but when it comes to your home, that's the hardest decision that can be made. And yet the state continues to fight against something that just might help those of us who live here. I mean, I think we need to have a look elsewhere. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Okay. Would you like to continue, Bill?
Yes. Moving on to Article Four. I'd move to see if the Budget Committee will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Hopkinen School Board and the Hopkinen Educational Association, which calls for the following changes in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level. Fiscal year 2021, estimated increase of $307,669. 2021-22, estimated increase of $315,149. In 2022-23, an estimated increase of $309,462. And further to raise and appropriate the sum of $307,669 for the upcoming fiscal year, such sum representing the costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. The school board recommends this article and the school board vote on this was four to nothing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I would just like to say for the record that, you know, healthcare cost is a big one for us and it's not easy to negotiate, but it's, it's one of the biggest cost drivers that we have and it, and we try to, you know, to negotiate with that to have more of a share in the healthcare costs in the future. And hopefully the school board has set the precedent for other future, future school boards to continue to, you know, try to share that healthcare cost onto the teachers.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Article Four say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? That's a unanimous vote by the Budget Committee?
Okay, and then moving on, I would move, I would move that the Budget Committee approve Article Six to see if the school, to see if the Budget Committee will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Hopkinen School Board and the Teamsters Local Number 633 of... Of...
I don't have it, I don't have it either.
I think I've got you, Billy. Has it changed? I don't, I don't think it's changed. That's the last one. This'll be the next page.
Yeah, here it is. Yep.
Just make sure there's a number in there.
What, what article number?
I'm on Article.
Six.
Six.
Six, so here's the appendix.
Five there though.
Okay.
It might say five on there.
Let me start at the beginning here.
Wait, make sure, it might be five. It's added there. SB two.
Oh, we added SB two.
Hold on just a second. Let's make sure we get the right one.
Sorry, I flipped and as you can see, there's...
Yeah. When the copying was done, they missed a...
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. So I'm going to start at the beginning on Article Six.
Article Six.
Article Six. I move that the Budget Committee approve Article Six, which is to vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Hopkinen School Board and the Teamsters Local Number 633 of New Hampshire Teamsters, which calls for the following changes in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level. For fiscal year 2021, an estimated increase of $12,437. Fiscal year 21-22, an estimated increase of $10,751. Fiscal year 22-23, an estimated increase of $13,896. And then fiscal year 23-24, which is an estimated increase of $9,175. And further to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,437 for the upcoming fiscal year, such sum representing the costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. The school board recommends this article. The school board vote was three to nothing.
Second. Been made and seconded. On Article Six? Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? It's a unanimous vote again by the Budget Committee?
Okay, moving on. Would move to...
Take this away. It might just confuse you.
Yeah, hold on, let me just read the first words though. I would move to see if the Budget Committee will vote to raise and appropriate the sum. This is Article Eight. I move to see if the Budget Committee will approve Article Eight to raise and appropriate a sum of $150,000 for the purpose of the general contingency fund to meet the cost of unanticipated expenses that may arise during the year and to expend said funds or to take any other action in relation thereto. The Hopkinen School Board recommends this article. The school board vote was three to two.
Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Yes.
I'm sorry, did you?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, Tom is second, second.
Janet, if I may?
Yes.
I have, so I feel a little conflicted about this article. We are, as I understand it, unable to recommend a change in the amount of this article. We, as a Budget Committee, can either recommend it to, for the school district meeting or we can recommend voting it down. And so my personal view is that we should have a contingency fund, but that it should be less than it is now. As I've looked at what's been put forward, there are three potential positions that could be needed. And the general guidance that we've, I think, heard and used at the Budget Committee is about $100,000 a position, give or take. So if one of those positions hits, the contingency fund will be used. If two hit, the contingency fund will be insufficient and the school administration and the board will have to figure out how to deal with that. The other things that were listed in the presentation on the contingency fund, including the numeracy and literacy specialists, are things that, those are already, those reflect hard decisions that Steve, as superintendent, already made of things to reduce from the budget. And it's not that I'm in support of those reductions because those are quite important positions, but that's the hard work that was done by the administration and the school board already. And so those don't feel to me like things that belong in a, in a contingency fund. Those are things that either should be in the operating budget or not. The three potential positions that could be needed if the numbers change feel like things that potentially, you know, where contingency is needed. And one of those, which is the kindergarten, we've heard repeatedly from Steve that you think that's very, that's unlikely based on what, on the research that you all have done from Peters. So there's really two positions there that where there's a real chance, and I think a contingency fund of $100,000 to cover one of those would be sufficient. So my personal preference is that that figure would be 100 and that either that's all there would be or that that $50,000 would then be moved, that additional $50,000 would then go to the maintenance trust fund to address some of the comments that were made earlier about needing to put more money into maintenance. So I'm a little conflicted because I don't really want to vote it down, but on the floor during the school district meeting, I think it's, it might be worth a conversation worth having.
There were two high school sections that were cut as well. It could be science and...
Okay, thank you, Steve.
So that's about 40,000.
Okay.
So that's, four terrifically goes half.
Yep.
I put in the, and I appreciate the comments about numeracy, so those were very hard decisions. And one of the suggestions that was made could be backfill one of those positions with volunteers. And so, you know, if you can't get the services that we give for kids or services with the time of volunteers, you know, we could try something different and backfill that with contingency, only if things didn't pop. I just think if kindergarten doesn't pop, third grade doesn't pop, secondary doesn't pop, and high school sections doesn't pop, to have that kind of freedom and not be honest and say, look, we've never not had three library assistance in the 21 years I've been in this district. Numeracy assistance, and I did it for, it's something like 800 hours of intervention time for kids. Those were very difficult decisions. And if no other thing popped, I just wanted to be transparent saying that the next board, because this is actually, the next board is not even this board because of the old positions, have really some flexibility that we can't backfill those volunteers, that those needs may be, but I appreciate your statement.
Any other discussion? No? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Any abstentions? It's a unanimous vote by the Budget Committee.
Okay, moving on. I'd like to move that the Budget Committee approve Article Nine, which is to raise and appropriate $142,500 to be added to the school district building repair maintenance fund established on March 6, 1993, and renamed at the March 9, 2019 school district meeting. The school board recommended this article. The school board vote was three to two.
Sir, a second? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it's a unanimous vote on Article Nine.
Okay, moving on. I'd move that the Budget Committee approve Article Ten, which is to vote to raise and appropriate $40,000 to be added to the Special Education Expendable Trust Fund established on March 19, 2005, and renamed at the March 10, at the March 10, 2018 meeting. The Hopkinen School Board recommends this article. The school board vote was five to nothing.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded on Article Ten. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? It's a unanimous vote on Article Ten.
And finally, I would move that the Budget Committee approve Article Eleven, which is to raise and appropriate $15,000 to be added to the Replacing School District Vehicles Capital Reserve Fund established on March 6, 2010. School board, I'm sorry, the school board recommends this article. And that vote was five to nothing.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded on Article Eleven. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstention? It's a unanimous vote on Article Eleven. That's it.
We have to sign now.
Thank you. Do you have the forms to sign?